That would be beginning June sixteenth, right?
Sixteenth.
Oh, yeah.
June sixteenth, beginning June sixteenth.
Your last meeting in the morning?
Well, whatever the next council meeting is, will be the fifteenth, I believe.
It's the fifteenth.
Correct.
After that.
Can he get sworn in on the fifteenth? I believe we have to change your, the resolution we adopted with his resolution, with his resignation date. I believe we'd have to change that next meeting, adopt a different resolution with a new end date for Tom. And then we have another resolution that would have a start date for Matt.
So I can't, when I said June thirtieth, but I leave earlier?
He did say he'll leave earlier.
No, we have to change that date.
Can I just make a resolution today?
Well, no, I can bring that next time, we can pass that resolution.
I'm fine with that.
It's up to Tom, I didn't want to.
No, I said I'm fine with that, I honestly am.
The next time we'll pass the resolution and.
That's perfect.
So we do vote.
Does he have to show up?
Yeah, I got a feeling I'm getting pushed out here.
We can't have.
That's okay.
We can't have two council members, we can't be both active at the same day.
Well, the resolution could be that he's, he takes my spot after the end of the fifteenth meeting.
Starting on the sixteenth.
The sixteenth.
So we'd swear him in on June first.
Swear him in on June first.
July first.
July first, or whatever that.
Sorry, what month?
The first meeting in July.
At that first meeting in July.
Yeah, July, we'll swear him in that.
I'm more than fine with that.
Good. Motion by Councilmember Batshire, second by Councilmember Morgan to offer the vacant council members, soon to be vacant council member's spot to Matt Sharpie. Further discussion?
There, thank you letters or anything mailed out to the applicants?
I think staff should.
We can.
I think they do have, we really had a good pool and.
We did, yeah.
You know, I was sitting there like, oh geez, these guys are gonna take my spot, you know? I think they did pretty, they really, they really did a good job.
And there's three seats for this election, so.
That's correct.
There's opportunity.
The new person plus you plus Joe.
Yeah.
Those three spots.
Plus my replacement.
Right.
Those three doesn't give me a lot though.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My spot, I love doing.
So our threes are up for.
We, that's the term.
Yeah, there's three.
Joe, Mick and I.
That's why I said come August, then those three seats will be up for registration.
Yeah, they can file for them at that time.
Filing, yep, yep. We hope they do. Okay, heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Motion carried. Okay, item fifteen, discussion and feedback from the Community Center Committee member, eighth Community Center member regarding liquor licenses at Arlington Community Center. This was requested by Councilmember Morgan.
So, Rich, I think you were on the email chain originally, the email that had come out.
Yes, I did. I did read that, yeah.
Right after, I did have a follow-up conversation with Tim Hogg and Miller. And he shared several valuable points, I don't know that I was able to touch on when we were, I don't know if you call it debating, but we were talking about the liquor license. And so the commu- uh, Community Center community had, you know, debated heavily on, on the topic of, of opening up to Sibley County. And I know Amy had, had brought up the suggestion of, you know, maybe pushing it back to the community and, and at that moment I was thinking, you know, well, we had, we, we needed something for June first. You know, kinda, I didn't really go down that line as far as, you know, maybe pushing it off and, you know, being there in the meeting, I was listening to everything that was happening and, and I thought, well, if we get the two fifty, you know, and, but there was, there was a lot of frustration amongst that, and I'm, I'm hearing this from one source, I hadn't talked to the others, but amongst the Community Center meetings, members that essentially we, you know, what are they good for if, if we're just gonna change, change what they're asking for? So I took that, you know, that was some feedback, kinda tough to hear.
During the day.
So when I started thinking about it more, I thought, well, geez, what better time to try this out than during the COVID stuff when we, when we don't have that many events booked? Obviously, the dollar amount is lowered. Another point they brought up through, through my conversation with them was that the catering system is, is not, you know, only Arlington. And essentially, it's the same building and, you know, this is coming from an Arlington businessman, which I was, you know, I would almost feel that, you know, you know, the fact that he's, you know, supporting this and advocating for it. I just thought maybe we could take another look at it and, I don't know if we can, there needs to be more discussion or if there's any, anybody open to taking a little different approach on this one or, again, I think this is like the perfect year to try it. He had mentioned that he felt that they were trying it for three years, that, you know, there were some issues that they, they felt they had and thought that this was a way of remedying that, so.
I don't know, I guess right now I, I, I really feel like if we're gonna change, change something, make a big change, I want it to benefit our businesses. Because this, I mean, this is just crazy, they haven't had any business for three months. If there were any other times, I'd be totally open, right? If it was normal, if things were normal the last three months, I'd be absolutely open to that, give them some competition. Maybe they'd bring people in or whatever too, I don't know. But like right now, I just, I wanna fight for my community, my businesses and my community. If I'm gonna change something, I wanna fight for them right now. But I, like I said, I'm open, I'm open in the future, but I'm, I, not right now, I'm not open.
So the decision was made at the last council meeting to open it up to the county?
No.
No, 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 no.
Or it was not?
No, it was, it was just to lower, it was to lower, so.
They changed it. It was everything in what they recommended.
Yep.
Here's the other thing, and, and this has happened before, over and over and over again. Committees, I appreciate everything that they do, I'm on a bunch of committees, I, I had been on committees prior to this or whatever too, for many, many years. And committees are a recommending body to the council. So with that being said, I appreciate all the work that they do because I mean, there's a lot of minds that go into, to bringing up their, their recommendation, but they are a recommending body. So as the council maybe sometimes tweaks or changes what they recommend or sometimes goes against what they recommend, or on the other hand, when we go with what they recommend, they're, they're a recommending body.
I think we've done that with every committee.
It's the nature of it.
Well, I know many times the EDA committee made recommendations and they did not fly. Some of the members questioned why they did not fly, but they're still all there.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it was just, and I think Amy by sending it back to them, and I don't know if that would have, what, what would we have done by sending it back? Like, that's kinda, that was kinda my thought on it.
I think you said you debated for almost an hour.
No, I'm, like, I'm, I'm not even kidding you, it was an hour on, on that topic.
Yeah, to send it back is asking for another hour-long debate, probably.
Yeah.
And I guess one quick thing to add to that, being there of course as well, it's important that they feel heard as well. And that's good that it's being brought back by, by Joe. And I'm sure, you know, that's one thing that's important is that these committees are heard and the communication has been opened between all the various committees and having all the reports on the council packets. So that is one way to really move forward and have that and there is time and these things can always be omitted or changed as well. But it's just important to carry these discussions forward, appreciate all the committees we have and thank you for the, the compliments, Michelle is very important. But, you know, I think it's just important to know that they're heard and being acknowledged and it's not easy to make these decisions.
You could have sent it back with a recommendation from council to include the, only the Arlington businesses, just so that they know it's actually, it's more about respect. That you tell them this is what council wants and they might, if you explained it, this is why to them.
Yeah, so I mean, like in that moment, I mean, I voted for it, you know, and I support that. In, in that moment, for me, I'm thinking, okay, sending it back is just derailing this thing for three more months, whatever. What good is that doing? And I, I had a feeling as though we needed something on June first so that somebody who might get an event, so.
So are we proposing any changes here or are we not? I mean, is it, it's good that we had the discussion.
No, I, I, personally, I was just looking for some discussion and kinda, kinda see where, see where people were at, so.
Just talking about the process.
I, I do like your idea, Amy, I mean, when we do go or, or against maybe or change a recommendation from a body or from a committee, that is a good idea to send it back and just say, hey, this is what the council is thinking and this is the reasons behind it.
This is why.
I, you know, if the council is firm or maybe they come back with maybe some other ideas of why we should really go the way that they recommended in the first place, maybe it would change their minds or something if they had some background on, on how we felt about it or whatever too.
Yeah, 'cause they don't know, they might just, some of them found out about it in the paper and said.
Right, and, yeah, and I mean, I don't want them to feel like they're not heard or that we don't appreciate everything that they do because honestly, it, it takes a lot of time to discuss things and, and.
Yeah, they give up their nights to come sit here too, so.
Oh, absolutely. So, I mean, it would be nice to maybe have like a protocol that we typically do when we do not, or when we're choosing maybe to go against.
I think for the, for this one, it would have been tough to send back, like I, I see, I, you know, and I, I, I don't know, in the moment, I, I think, you know, we made the best for, for what we had.
Well, and I think another thing though to consider is, so like to your point, right, you wanna focus on the businesses here in Arlington, that's your main focus. If there were Sibley County businesses that were coming to us and saying, we want your community center, that would be a different story, right? Then we would have to take that into consideration because that would be an opportunity to bring in that, that business, that revenue, what have you. So it's one thing to say, let's just open it up to all of them versus if we have vested interest in it, that makes it a lot easier to make that decision. So if, if anybody on the council or on the committee has any businesses across Sibley County that they know of that are interested, that I think would probably speak higher volumes compared to just opening it up for the chance at a business coming this way to, to bid for it.
Well, well said.
How would you guys feel about creating some kind of policy regarding, you know, decisions that don't really have a timeline, right? This one kinda had a timeline.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think this one had, and that was the pressure, it was like, okay, you know, I was there and I felt like we covered at least half of the two major things, right? So it was like fifty percent was covered with the price reduction, the other one was opening it up, so. And then we had the timeline of June first and it's like, well, there's no time to be sending it back. That was like, that was what I was feeling when we, you know, when we all.
Right, but I guess like, what I was gonna ask for maybe is a policy stating that if we go against or tweak a recommendation from a committee, if we can put that out in an email to that group that night, before it hits the papers, if they weren't listening, before the next day and the rumor mills.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that's just out of respect to show those committee members that, hey, you know, we didn't go with what you wanted, but, or we went partly with what you wanted and maybe just a brief summary or something, is that something that we can maybe?
Yeah.
And if there's time, you could send it back to the committee and this one, July won't be on, so we could have had a special meeting.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Just something to think about.
But I mean, for, for practice or whatever, moving on in the future, I mean, I think that, that communication
We could have a policy about.
is huge and it, and it goes, like you said, Michael, with opening it up and having meetings from all the different committees right here in front of us for the whole town to see and for us, well, even for us to see, but the whole town to see is huge.
Yeah.
And we've been fighting for this for a long time and hopefully it just keeps on getting better, so.
Good, any more comments on that discussion, any more discussion items?
Yeah, I'm on that, I'm on that committee.
Oh, Kirk, yes. Yep.
The whole, I think the whole thing behind it wasn't being anti-business, but we're thinking we might get more weddings. You know, see if there's somebody in Winthrop, if they, if they went through a bar over here, they'll have a wedding here, if not, they won't.
Right.
That was the whole thing that we would get, so it wouldn't really hurt the local bars because if their bar from out of town can't get it, they're not gonna come to any.
They're not coming anyhow, yeah.
They're not coming, yeah, they were letting them.
And that was the whole, people should know that our committee wasn't being anti-business, we were looking, I mean, some people are looking out for the local businesses, but we were kinda also looking out for that deficit of the community center and it's gonna be huge this year.
Right.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay.
But I know one other comment that was brought up is a lot of businesses have to bid against out-of-town businesses. They don't always, the local business always doesn't get bid.
Right.
That was another point that was brought up, so.
And I think that goes along with Joe's point of if there is a time to try it, why not now?
Right, that was gonna be my final sales pitch on the whole idea, I mean, that was, that was, that was really what I had to run with is that there's, you know, who knows if our locals bid on it this year, you know? I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm open for it if, if.
I think they're gonna try and get whatever they can get and try and recoup some of the funds that they weren't allowed to even think about doing.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to item number sixteen, approve, deny changes to the personnel policy.
This was sent back to the personnel committee after the last council meeting and it was just to clean up one section so that we can have a, a clean copy to send out, we have a lot of new employees right now, and then like a clean copy to send out to new employees. The changes that committee made, which were like Joe, myself and Tom, or the consensus of the committee was to change the probationary period to six months. And I did look it up and you don't have to have any probationary period, it's up to the city. What we'd like is a probationary period. Time off during probationary period will be unpaid. PTO will be available thirty days after the last day of your probationary period. And we also removed, to take off the, that you must use forty hours consecutive, so that you'd have to take a whole week off. We removed that section because we felt that we addressed it with the capping the hours at two hundred and ninety-six.
What's, is that not a state thing or something? Is that not the consecutive forty-hour time off is, I thought that was regulated by, at a state level?
That concerns me with my positions.
Ross, are you still there? Oh, I think I might have muted him. Ross, are you still there? Rick just asked a question if we have to have in our personnel policy that they have to take a full week off, consecutive forty hours off.
Is it legal to do that?
Sure. No, he said, is it required?
Is that a requirement by law?
Is it a requirement?
Is it, so what was the question again?
So is, is it, is it state mandated that an employee has to take forty hours off of PTO?
Consecutive.
Consecutively?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
No, not that I'm aware of either.
So this was, this was not in place.
Go ahead, Ross.
Oh, well, I'm aware that there are certain businesses, for example, financial institutions where, you know, sometimes in their employee policies, they require that vacation be taken in a certain time span, you know, such as the minimum of five days at a time. And I, I think there's some fraud prevention reason for that. I guess I'm not prepared to explain exactly why, but that's my recollection.
No, that's okay, that's okay, Ross, that answers my question.
But I'm not aware of any, any state mandate of, of any kind regarding that.
Yeah, I think it's unjust and I don't want anybody telling me when and how to take my time.
You have to, yeah.
That is too structured.
Okay, well, here's the thing, the reason, we never, we did not have that before. We put it in place probably what, three years ago or something like that, Tom?
It was like that.
Or either before, something like that. And the, and the reason being is that what we wanted is.
We wanted checks and balances and we don't have a lot of checks and balances in the office. Lisa does a lot of the incoming and outgoing of the funds, right? And nobody really knows exactly what she does, even prior to that, there were, there's always pieces of her job that only she knows, right? I trust her, but what about the next person or what about whatever? It's about checks and balances, that's why they do it in the financial industry, that's why we implemented it here. I thought it was just for not all employees though. Specific to the financial employees.
In the policy, it was all employees, had to take.
Yeah, but.
I don't think you could just pick out one and say it's only for you.
Yeah.
Well, if it's finance, if it has to do with finances and the city's finances and stuff like that, right? You know, when I, I'm gonna say their names wrong, Abdo.
Abdu, Abdu and Ike.
Abdu, there you go.
A E M.
A E M.
A E M, better yet. Um, you know, they had a meeting with us or whatever and they said that we were at a huge liability, especially with her having all that financial, both ways. And never taking any time off.
Well, we, so, so this, the change, go ahead.
And, well, and like I was saying, in a bank setting, they have to take a week off, so they can't touch any transactions in a week. No matter how much I trust somebody, after a week, they say, if something funny's going on, you're gonna see it. And that's why we implemented that. And, but I seriously thought it was just for Lisa's, Lisa's and or whatever position, not everybody.
But we were also gonna try to cross-train another employee.
Well, it's happening now.
Along with, that was part of that discussion.
But that's by the time, right?
Yes.
For that coverage for that forty-hour work.
That other person not only would know what's going on or you had some check and balance there, but at the same time, if Lisa were to be in an accident, get sick, whatever the situation may be, we have another employee there that hopefully to some degree could step in and take care of at least the business that had, that has to be done today.
So.
Which was part of that.
Agreed with that, yeah.
Something that was covered was how much vacation Lisa has stockpiled. So that, that forty-hour thing, I don't know if it really worked, 'cause she's got like a boatload. And, and that's, and in order to get down to this is going to have to take a lot off, so basically it's, you can occur up to, what was it, two hundred and fifty-four hours, I think, plus forty. So that's where the two ninety-four, so you're allow, you're allowed to roll over one full week a year. But you've gotta get below that number or you no longer occur it.
Correct.
Yes, so she hasn't been taking it. So the hope of her taking forty hours hasn't been happening. That's what's gotten her to build up that much time.
Well, it was, it was prior to the PTO, what they had here is they had sick time.
And they had vacation time. And why she has all these hours is because she never took a vacation, they never took a sick day. They kept on accumulating, accumulating, accumulating since she started working, right? So that's why she has a boatload. When we switched over to PTO, there's an emergency or what's it called?
I know what you mean.
Catastrophic health.
Sick bank?
Sick bank.
Something's that affecting.
Right, that we didn't wanna take away all these hours, right?
Yeah.
That she earned, we capped it at whenever we made the change in what was it?
I don't know if it's capped, just I don't know her.
No, that she's not making her current wage on that, she's making the wage at, what was it?
At the time that she accrued.
At the time of the change.
I think at the time she accrued those hours.
When we put the bank in place, that, that pay got froze at that amount.
That pay. Right.
You're talking the conversion of the sick hours to PTO, correct?
To PTO.
Correct.
Right, okay, that's, okay.
So you're saying if she, you, go ahead.
I, I like the idea, I, I like the idea of not, if you have enough, you don't get any more. That's one way around it.
That's the limit, that's, that forces them to take it, which is what you want because they get rested.
Or. Or you lose it, or you don't get it, yeah.
But so, so the part of this though is, so you got a new employee who gets pretty much not much.
Right.
And you say, huh?
You gotta take forty.
You gotta take forty off. You know, it just, the, that one size, and then if you try to isolate it to just her, now you're, you know, now you're only doing it to her and I don't think that works either.
No, no.
Not her, but the position she holds, right?
The position.
What, clerk, she's city clerk?
Deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk, so.
I mean, I, right, and, and I, in that case, that's where I feel like there needs to be some more checks and balances. We're getting there, we're getting there. But I'd like to see this put in place or kept in place for her position, for the deputy clerk clerk position.
That's something the attorney can check on.
Ross, Ross, in the personnel policy.
Yes. Yes.
Can the city specify that only the deputy clerk has to take forty consecutive hours off each year?
I'd say no, you, you can't discriminate in that fashion.
Because she's hourly.
I think the policy, the policies of that type, I think, have to be universal to all employees. I, I know what the issue is and I think the solution is proper supervision. You know, if an employee is not following, you know, recommended policy, it's up to these, you know, the administration to counsel them.
Yeah, you get that?
He didn't wanna say Amy.
He didn't wanna say Amy. Okay, as far as approve or deny the changes in personnel policy, you have them before you, Amy read them off, that is what we're acting on. Not the entire personnel policy, but just the changes.
Correct, just those changes.
Okay?
I'll make a motion to approve those changes in the personnel policy.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hattles, Hattelsted, second by Councilmember Morgan to approve the listed changes in the personnel policy. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no?
Motion carried. Item seventeen, approve or deny payment to Herpy, or is it Jerpy?
Jerpy.
It's Jerpy, yeah, I knew one of those two, the first letters were silent. Jerpy contracting in the amount of sixteen thousand nine forty for replacement of three valves.
I added to the agenda so I would not forget that on March sixteenth, council approved eleven thousand five hundred and sixty to replace two. But when they were out there doing it, one, wrong a leak that day, so they had to call me and say, we have an emergency water flooding on the street, we need to replace another one, so I said, okay.
I think it was the valve that they had to turn off.
Yes.
To get water shut off to the two.
Broke.
And then it broke, so.
And that was the big communication debacle.
That was that day, so, correct.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess in, you know, the good side is it broke when somebody was right there to fix it. They were in town, they could fix it, so, could have happened in the middle of winter.
I'll make a motion to approve paying Jerpy sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars for the replacement of three shut-off valves.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Hattelsted to approve the payment to Jerpy contracting in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars for the replacement of three valves. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Motion carried. Moving on to new business. Approve or deny hiring of Andrew Konich, Konitsky as Arlington Police Chief beginning June eleventh, twenty twenty with a starting salary seventy-one thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
Does the PTO reflect what we just changed?
Correct.
What?
His will, he'll start with what's in the personnel, we didn't change the PTO, the amount he gets, that's the same as it is in the personnel policy. He won't have to take forty hours consecutive hours.
Good evening, Chief Pedersen.
Good evening. Uh, we did complete the background on Mr. Konitsky and everything looked good, we talked to. We talked to a number of people and, uh, I don't believe there's anything that would disqualify him for the position. I think he looks like a good candidate, so.
Good.
And he's passed, just to clarify, he's passed the physical, the psych-
The physical, the psych, and the background have been completed, so.
And you'll overlap by one day? What, what do you have planned for that one day?
Uh, we have a lot of like passwords and accounts that need to be set up and access that needs to be. And then we're also gonna go through a real quick, um, audit of the evidence room. So I want that to be turned over so that he's confident that everything that's said to be in there is in there and, um, so.
Then I can go home and tell my wife that, yes, I will be, uh, introducing him to, uh, businesses up and down the street as I did with Chief John.
I was, yep, yep, I was gonna talk to you about that.
I will do that.
And see if, uh, that was your intention again, so, yeah.
Yeah, sure, well, will do.
So that was, uh, we were looking at the date of the eleventh then?
Starting on the eleventh, yes.
It's the start date.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I have one question before we have more.
Yes.
The three thousand dollar moving fund, I know with John, what we did, uh, we offered that to him if he moved to town. Have we done that in the past or we offered to pay them a certain dollar amount just to move into the response time? Or was this something that was negotiated with Andrew?
John's it was to move into town.
Yeah, the Thiandras is to move into the response area, correct? Twenty minute response time, I believe that stated.
It is what it's, does say.
I'm questioning, have we ever done that before or did you negotiate, huh?
Do you wanna change it to town? Did you, I, I'm trying to remember what I talked to him about. Andrew, you're on the phone. Did we talk about moving to the twenty minute response time for the three thousand dollars or was it specifically to the city of Arlington?
My understanding of it is the twenty minute response time area.
Would you like to change it?
I don't know that I wanna change it. Is that something that you guys negotiated or, I mean, if it was offered to him, I guess we live with it. My question was, I don't know that we've done that in the past to move within the response time. Did it in the past to move to within the community?
To move.
To the town.
John, do you remember what you, how yours read?
I believe mine was in town.
In, correct.
Okay.
I would like to see it in town.
I would like to see it in town also.
I agree.
And if he wants to move within the twenty minute response time, then that's fine. That's part of his, what he needs to.
But he only gets the three thousand if he lives in town.
But he only gets the three thousand if he lives in town, yes.
Did you hear that, Andrew?
Yep.
This is not a deal breaker, is it?
No, it's not.
I was always fine with paying that and the biggest reason was, is because if you talk to the citizens in town, they really like the fact that all of our city employees, whether it's city administrator, police chief, police officers, whatever, live within the community. So we offer those funds to entice them to move to within the community.
Yep.
That was the reason for us doing that.
And they, and they feel like- Well, there's change to within the city limits.
And to some degree that has worked.
Well, yeah, because then, you know, we get a feeling that the citizens get a feeling that they're, they're vested in our community. Not that they're just coming here to work.
Correct.
So.
Okay, that change would be made?
Kurt?
Yes, Kurt.
One question, is there a timeframe for that?
For that, for the moving incentive?
City administrator that got paid, I think, three grand, lived here for six months and they'll move out of town. Was there a timeframe?
I think it's one year.
They have to live here one or two years.
They must move here within one year to get them.
They must use it within one year. Otherwise it's, the offer is off.
But if they move away six months after that.
I think what he's after, yeah, I think he's after is, you could have a contractual that, uh, say they moved away after a year or two or whatever it was, six months, whatever it was, then they'd have to pay it back if it was, you know, if they didn't, if they weren't here for a year type of thing, um.
I think the idea was for them to live in town and, yeah, give them the twelve months.
Well, chances are.
Once you're here, you're here.
Right.
Until you retire.
That's what John did.
Exactly what Chief Patterson did.
What we, what would you like to have it be? Do you wanna put a condition on there?
Well, if you're gonna say you were gonna give them three thousand dollars if they moved to town within one year, and then eight months later, you can move out of town, they're gonna come in town, rent something eight months later, find the apartment law in our town. You just threw away three thousand dollars. They're the city's tax dollars. So what's the point of that?
Yeah.
True.
The only thing they'd, still will have to stay within the twenty minute response time.
Correct. But then we defeated the perk of paying the town.
Yep, I agree.
The three thousand dollars.
Unless you put in there that you have, within twelve months, I understand they have to buy a house, you don't want to force them to buy something they don't want. You have twelve months to move to town. And if you decide anytime during your employment to move out of town, but still within the twenty minute response time, you have to reimburse the city the money you were paid to live in town. Or a prorated amount.
I was just gonna say, at the very most prorated.
I find it prorated.
But I don't, no.
So the thing is, is it's, the thing, the way that I look at it is if he's gonna get the money to move into town, into town, into the town, that's helping him move from wherever they are to come into town. And that's like a perk. It's a perk. It's a little, a little more enticing here from moving to town, I'll give you this. You know, if they move out in six months and he's our police chief and he took that money and he didn't give it back.
I think we might be looking into it a little bit too far. So typically it's a moving expense.
Exactly.
So what we're, so we're hiring a professional, um, who's coming from another community. And there's expenses involved in that. Um, so it's kind of a helpful gesture to get them to come and serve our community. Um, I, I hear it and I understand it as far as the whole living in town. But I'd probably have to lean towards just have, personally having it be a moving expense. And that's to, to help have a professional. We're not talking about a year one person. We're hiring a professional, uh, with experience to come and serve our community.
And we do see that a lot in the professional world, uh, that I'm in, um, reimbursements, um, like a lot more money than this.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, how, uh, how many are we at?
We're on fourteen, no, where are we on? We're on, uh-
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. I would like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Andrew-
Konichny.
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 There you are.
Arlington Police Chief, uh, beginning June eleventh, twenty twenty, with a starting salary of seventy-one thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
Could you change it to that he has to move to Arlington though?
No.
Not that he has to move to Arlington.
Second.
Leave it within city limits?
No, within response time.
Twenty minute response time?
Twenty, oh, definitely.
I guess I'm stuck on in city limits. Only because that's what the citizens want.
Okay, I will read the motion and then I will open it up for more discussion if you wish. Motion by Councilmember Batch, or second by Councilmember Morgan to approve the hiring of Andrew Konicki as Arlington Police Chief beginning June eleventh, twenty twenty with a starting salary of seventy-one thousand five hundred and ten. Is there additional discussion? It's open for discussion.
Add to it that it's within the city of Arlington, the three thousand dollars.
That's just my thought. I'm only one person.
I'm asking.
That's what we need to, need to decide before we vote, folks.
I'm personally okay with having it be a, um, it's, it's just a, it's a, it's a reimbursement for them moving to the community. So he's not, it's not like he's down the road, so he's gotta uproot, um, everything he has and, and move here. Or move within the twenty minutes, so that's, professionally, that's, that's what you see industry doing. Um, I, I, however, I do understand the, the feeling of, you know, wanting to have it within the community, but, um, he's coming to serve our community within twenty minutes and that's our policy, so, um.
Right, but when this was offered before, I guess we opted just that it was too tall.
Correct.
So I, I-
That's why I asked if this was a offer that was discussed between whoever and the potential chief or something changed or what happened, cause this is a normal policy.
Right. And it's going against what we've done in the past.
Correct.
Okay, the motion is to leave the offer as is then? Three thousand dollars moving to within the twenty minute response time.
I-
Is that right?
I'd like to have it in the city of Arlington.
Okay, so then you're amending the motion.
I would then second that motion.
It's been seconded by, well-
Okay.
Well, no.
No, Joe was second.
Oh, Joe.
There was a change to it.
Okay. So then changing it to within city limits of Arlington.
Just to be consistent, consistent.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Batch, or, uh, second by Councilmember Hattelsted then, to approve the hiring of Andrew Konicki as Arlington Chief, Police Chief, beginning June eleventh, twenty twenty, starting salary of seventy-one thousand five hundred and ten and the three thousand dollar moving incentive to be, uh, only if the move takes place to the city of Arlington. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Carried unanimously. Welcome, Chief Konicki.
I would just like to thank the council. I'm, uh, pretty excited about this. My wife and our, uh, three kids were pretty excited for the move and, and, uh, what this is gonna offer for us, for our lives. And I'm also excited to meet all you guys and, uh, just kinda figure out how the town works and, and be a, be a part uh, of a problem solver and help you guys achieve goals. And, uh, Tom, I was serious about that goal of finding the grumpiest guy in town and making him my best friend. And I'm pretty sure that's you, so that's just gonna happen.
Thank you, Andrew. But I won't be here much longer for you to pick on me, so you can swing by my house and we can have a beer though.
Well, you'll still be in town and in my job, I got a pretty easy way to figure out where people live, so.
I might move.
All right, thank you. We're looking forward to, uh, to working with you.
Can I just, sorry, I have to say this because I pulled up John's letter. And the city of Arlington will provide reimbursement of an amount not to exceed three thousand for moving your household goods to a permanent location within the twenty minute response time of the corporate city limits. That's what John was offered.
Within the corporate city limits.
Twenty minute response time.
With the twenty minute response time.
Exactly as I had it written.
I don't remember if that, I could be wrong.
I, I followed the last offer.
Did you remember it as that?
Nope.
Nope, I don't remember it as that either.
That's it, I read it in your letter and that's what it says.
Okay, does that change anything?
It says within the twenty minute response time of the corporate city limits, just like I wrote this letter.
Within the twenty minute response of the corporate, of the corporate city limits. So within twenty minutes of Arlington.
Of the edge, in other words, if he hits the city limits within twenty minutes.
If you're trying to pull.
Right. And, I mean, what options does he really have within twenty minutes of here? He has Green Isle, he has Gaylord. Glencoe.
Country.
And the country.
Rural, rural.
Country, if he wanted to live in the country.
I think it might help in regards to opening up a few more housing options to him as well, considering there's only about five listings in town right now. Who, Michelle, or Michelle, yeah, geez, Amy, who wrote that letter?
The one to John was written by Alora Elenbach, when she was in here.
Do you remember, Michelle, what that agreement was? Because, well, I could about swore it was in town.
It's in his personnel file too. This letter's in the personnel file.
It's in the personnel file.
I mean, going off of what you're talking about, and I know that we've offered that to like city administrators too, if they choose to live in the city of limits of Arlington.
Yep.
I, I mean, I could be wrong, but I think that was-
That's, well, I'm just following what was offered to last.
If they actually moved in.
Physically in town.
Is that right or not? You are here for everything.
Man, I can't, I guess I can't remember back that far. It just kinda perked my ears when he said he had three kids. It's like, our schools in town would love to, if you're looking at businesses, well, you know, we have schools, they're businesses, they would love to have three new kids.
Well, I think they're planning on moving to the district.
I, I think, yeah, like everyone in the room would love to have them live in the community, um, and, you know. I doubt they're gonna find a rental place to house the whole family, so they're, you know, what are the options? And, uh, yeah, I don't know.
Okay. The, uh, the motion stands as carried then? No, no further action on that, am I correct?
Within the city, change it to that he has to move to the city limits.
That was-
What if he doesn't take the job based on it?
The motion was-
I mean, I mean, I, I think you just said that you look forward to coming here.
He doesn't have to, it, it's not restricting it, so, right?
No, but if I, yeah.
You already voted that way.
I don't.
I'm just saying, if you wanted to move out in the country, I know.
He can still move in the country.
All right, eighteen point one, approve or deny payment to watch guard in the amount of six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars.
Uh, this is just a simple addressing a loss of some equipment that was damaged in the accident. So we got an estimate to replace what was in the previous, um, Impala. And in order to have the second squad car fully functional as a marked unit and able to, uh, do speed patrol and, um, have capturing a video the way we should, uh, we would need to get that ordered so that when, uh, Chief Konicki starts, uh, he'd be able to get that in, installed. Otherwise it's gonna delay for quite some time. We have already received, uh, verbal approval from League of Minnesota Cities that there's gonna be enough money to cover this, um, and then some.
Yep.
So it, it isn't anything that would becoming extra out of the budget. It would be replaced very shortly.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the, the watch guard purchase.
Second.
Thank you.
Hattles, is that Hattelsted?
Yeah.
Yes.
Usually is. Just wanted to check.
We're kinda quiet tonight.
Oh, my gosh.
Quiet?
We've only got one more meeting, what the hell?
Next meeting, Joe.
Yeah, motion by, motion by Councilmember Batch, second by Councilmember Hattelsted to approve the payment to watch guard in the amount of six thousand one hundred, one hundred and eighty dollars. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carried. And next, eighteen point two, approve deny payment to stalker in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Uh, exact same story with that. That's the radar unit. Um, it was damaged and unusable, both front and rear antenna. So, same thing.
Make a motion to approve the purchase, uh, to stalker?
Second.
I know, I checked that one twice, I thought, is that right?
Terrible day for used equipment.
Yes.
Supply company.
Councilmember Batch, uh, introduce motion, uh, to approve payment to stalker in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. And second by Councilmember Amright. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Item nineteen, approve deny a bid for seal coating for Pearson Brothers in the, uh, amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars forty-five cents.
This is seal coating, does it include rock?
Kirby, Joe, just to ask if they're putting rock down as well.
Yeah, it does say excess rock should be picked up.
I think it says, it doesn't say something about excess rock will be picked up for streets, sweeps, so, yeah.
So I think that would indicate that they do rock too.
Yep.
Introduce a motion to approve the, uh, thirty-four thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-five cents. Thank you for Pearson Brothers.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Batch to approve the bid for seal coating of Pearson Brothers in the amount of seven, thirty-four thousand, I'm sorry, thirty-four thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-five cents. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried. Any committee updates from anyone that?
Rich.
There's one more.
We have Bob Allen sitting. Oh, Bob Allen.
Isn't there one more, the forty-seven? Crack fill?
Um, or the two quotes.
No, those were the two quotes.
Two quotes, sorry. Two quotes for seal coating.
Yeah.
You wanna come in and sit down and?
Bob, have a chair.
The mic, the mic is on.
The mic is on.
Mister Mayor, council members, I'd like to, uh, thank you for the opportunity to come and visit. I know that, that there's a line through our discussion, and I understand there's been conversations earlier today about taking it off the agenda because the city, um, uh, was not, uh, responsible or taking action on, on, uh, the, the fairgrounds and the racetrack, I believe is the, the situation that was explained to me. But, uh, Mike Sharping said he did get a call from, uh, Ross Arneson explaining that, that it was up to the county to make that decision. And, and I, I have no problem with that, I, I appreciate the relationship that we've got with the city of Arlington. So I, I just wanted to, um, stop in and visit and let you know that we do wanna open our racetrack for our fortieth year here in Arlington. It'll be our, our fortieth year of myself and my wife personally operating the business in town. And, uh, we wanna get that going as soon as we can, uh, according to, uh, the, the CDC and, and the Minnesota State Guidelines. And we do wanna work with any local government that has any concerns as well. And because we have a good relationship with the city, we wanna make sure that there's no, uh, concerns that the city might have. And I know that you don't wanna take a lot of extra time to discuss it tonight, but, uh, just know that my door is always open. Give me a call and, and we can definitely have some discussions if there are any concerns. I just felt that because we're, uh, proposing to change the way that we're operating, uh, to meet the guidelines, that, that we wanna make sure that we're not ruffling any feathers or getting anybody upset, so. If there's any questions for me at all, I, I, we did present a plan. Um, the, the plan is to open in two or three weeks, so it's going to be a fluid plan because we have no idea what the regulations will be at that time. But, uh, we did, uh, uh, put out a plan based on what we felt the governor was saying today.
I have one question.
Sure.
Whose final decision is this, in your eyes?
Uh, for us to open?
Is it Sibley County? I understand it's gotta come, the rules have to come from Governor Walz. Does it fall on, in your eyes, the county? The county and the city?
Well, either way, I wanna work with both, I, I wanna make sure that we're, we're, we're not ruffling any feathers and getting anybody upset. We, the, the, the racetrack and the fairgrounds are within the city limits of Arlington. Um, there, there's discussion as to what the, uh, uh, the authority is, and, and I don't wanna tell somebody that they don't have authority because that's not my place, you know, my place is to do what you ask me to do, if we can possibly do it. And, and that's why I'm here, to make sure that there are no requests, uh, from the city, and we will go to the county and, uh, see what the county's, uh, uh, opinion is. I know the county commissioners did vote to ask Governor Walz to open all the businesses. So I, I would assume that their opinion is to, to get as many businesses open as they possibly can in a safe manner.
So we feel too, that's how I feel too.
Well, thank you, I, I was really impressed with the plan you put together. I mean, it spoke to the fact that you were aware that there were some restrictions that needed to be addressed. And, uh, I appreciated that, no matter who comes down with the final decision, I feel you're moving forward with, with the precautions uh, in place, and that's good.
And, and what we wanna do is, we wanna avoid the back and forth, so if there is anything within the city, we wanna make sure we're aware of it as soon as possible, because, as you know, time is a, a, a pretty important issue when you're dealing with eighteen to twenty events a year to, to, to make our livelihood and, and, uh, be successful or, or go out of business. And, and having lost, uh, you know, six to eight of those events, it's, it's going to be, uh, extremely difficult to start with. And, and, as everybody knows, the frustration level of, of shutting businesses down and telling people to stay home i- i- is just growing and growing. And, and we don't, don't wanna add to that frustration level if we make an announcement, we're opening next week and, uh, or two or three weeks, whatever the number is, and then all of a sudden, somebody comes back and asks a question, that we have to delay it for another meeting. So I don't wanna, uh, put anybody in that, that position, I wanna answer any questions upfront as, as soon as we possibly can. And if there are any other issues that, that have taken place with the racing, uh, I wanna know about them so that we can address them and be proactive.
We appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I'm looking forward to opening.
Saturday nights.
Yeah, we do. And sitting at home isn't the game.
No.
Okay, instead of committee updates, I'm gonna go right to the bottom and ask, uh, does anyone, uh, uh, want to discuss or what do we do with the Seneca trailer issue? I'm getting tired of it, I'm, I'm not gonna apologize for interrupting, uh, Lisa. Uh, I'm getting tired of hearing the same stuff every meeting. Uh, my advice to her, and I will continue this, is that she deals with, with, um, Seneca directly. If she has a problem with those trailers there, if they aren't, or Siwic. Uh, and, uh, she needs to deal with our administration and not come to the council every time for something that we probably have heard before, which we did. I should've stopped her tonight because she said the same thing that, that she said before.
I agree with a lot what you say, except for one thing, I think it's probably the city council's duty to take care of it because we talked about an agreement supposedly that's out there, that they can be there for two years, three years. Nobody can find this contract, so the first question is, is there even a contract? I don't know how Lisa Passvolga could go about finding that, she could ask Amy, but I think that's been searched for already.
We have, Michael and I have searched.
And it's nowhere, and they haven't come up with anything either, and the end result still is, since that is an industrial park, and yes, there are people living there, yes, we are allowing them to break the law.
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt.
So, doesn't it fall on the council's shoulders to address this issue?
I would like this council to, uh, instruct Administrator Newsom to bring action to the council to take, either to.
I believe they will have to go to planning and zoning to issue them a variance to out, keep those trailers out there. They'll, they'll have to be granted a variance to have trailers in.
Can we make a demand to people?
Can't we make, bring an end to it?
They can't live in an industrial, I'm not saying we can't do a variance, but right now, the way it sits, we are breaking.